...with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the March 19th, 2019 Board of Selectmen's meeting. On the agenda this evening, we have public service announcements. At 6:35, we have a poll hearing continuation. Then we have a proclamation of Donate Life Month. We have a vote to approve livery driver permit, a vote to approve a one-day liquor license, a request from OSB Academy to plant a tree, a vote to concur with the reappointment, a vote to approve two promotions within the DPW, a vote to accept a donation of $100 from Wait to the Sturbridge Farmers Market, a vote to approve and sign the annual town election warrant, department head updates, police department, building department, fire department, old business, new business, correspondence, approval of minutes, and citizens forum. Priscilla, any?
No.
No.
No public service.
No.
Okay, I've got a couple. There is a family ham toss Friday, March 29th, 2019 at Burgess Elementary School, 6:00 to 8:30 PM. And I found out during the week that a lot of other people were just as confused as I am. I always thought a ham toss was you tossed hams, but you don't. You shoot basketballs. And it works that there's an adult and one child from your family, so it sounds like a fun night, anyone that's interested.
And you win a ham.
You win a ham.
Yeah.
Yes. But it was nice to know I wasn't the only one.
Unless you're a ham.
Yeah. Okay, and then the annual food share radio-thon is April 18th. Southbridge, the 40th Annual Food Share Radio-thon will be held from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM Thursday, April 18th, 2019. The radio-thon will be broadcast live over WNEB 1230 AM in Worcester and WESO 970 AM and WISO 101.1 FM in Southbridge. Okay. And then this is from the Economic Development Coordinator. It says, "This memorandum is notice that on the 25th of April 2019, the Special Events Committee is planning to host a community bonfire on the Sturbridge Common. This has been put before the Sturbridge Recreation Committee and they support the event. The event will be similar to the one held in the fall at the Sturbridge Host where we are hoping to return for a fall 2019 bonfire. And this will feature local food vendors, live music and entertainment, as well as the bonfire." And then there's one from the Senior Center Director, not your grandma's bingo hall. "On Friday, May 31st, from 1:00 to 4:00, the Senior Center showcase will be held on all three floors of the Senior Center. Thirty-six different tables offering hands-on, up-close look at all the services, events, programs, and fun that the Senior Center has to offer. If you think that the Senior Center is just for old people to play bingo, then you don't know bingo. Come check out our fun, information-packed tables. Here are just a few: exercise demonstrations, mini-chair massages, learn to play cribbage, pitch, dominoes, armageong, blood pressure taken, chat with Gin and Satch, play a game of pool, check out the exercise room, meet the staff and see what they each have to offer, the seniors, talk to our COA board and Friends member group. Like puzzles, you can do that, too. Bus trips offered through the Friends group, nail polished with Pretty and Polly." So again, that's May 31st, 1:00 to 4:00. That takes care of public service. There is a posted continuation for a poll hearing. However, Jeannay, you said they called and...
They've withdrawn.
They've withdrawn. Okay, so we do need a motion then to close the public hearing because it was open.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Right.
Okay. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a proclamation for Donate Life Month. We have done this annually for, do you know how many years?
At least three.
At least, yes, okay.
I think more.
Well...
Five. I think five. I think five.
You probably have a better memory.
Well, with an earlier board.
Well, all four years that I've been here, we've done it.
Right, that's what I mean.
And we did it before.
And we were doing it with an earlier board, too.
Okay. So the proclamation reads, "Whereas there are more than 120,000 Americans and more than 5,000 in New England who are currently waiting for a life-saving organ transplant, and whereas there are over 1 million life-enhancing tissue transplants each year that are made possible by the generous donation of corneas, bone, skin, or other tissue, and whereas the people of Sturbridge, Massachusetts are proud of the sister-city relationship and grateful that it continues to grow and develop, and whereas New England is the home to the pioneering efforts of many of the world's first organ transplant surgeons, it is fitting that Massachusetts continue its unique leadership role in joining the national goal of signing up 50% of our driving population to become donors and is dedicated to making it fast and easy to sign up to save a life through our Registry of Motor Vehicles. And whereas this observation, sorry, pays tribute to organ and tissue donors and their families whose decision to donate life enables others to receive life-saving organs and tissues for transplant, now therefore, the Board of Selectmen of Sturbridge do hereby proclaim April 2019 to be Donate Life Month and urge all the citizens of Sturbridge to take cognizance of this event and participate fittingly in its observance." Is there a motion to sign the proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? And we also do have a flag which we raise April 1st. And Robin, do you have a time yet for that?
No, we don't have any set of time yet.
Okay, and then we can post it on the website because we don't have another meeting before that.
What day of the week is that following?
Monday. It's our first meeting of April.
It's after 3:00 because I have to get out of school.
Okay, Robin, would you like to come up and accept this as soon as we...
Thank you very much for having me.
Sign it.
I would like to urge everyone to get that heart on their driver's license. It's a nice emblem.
I didn't realize she went to school with Robin. Yes.
Yes, sirree.
We won't say how long ago we were married.
I was gonna say, it feels like yesterday. It probably was. Just a couple of years ago.
Just a couple. Because we're both 30 grand.
Thirty. Fifty's the new thirty, sixty's the new forty.
What's eighty?
Eighty's the new sixty. We're all basically twenty minutes, twenty years younger than our parents.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
No problem, Robin. Take care, see you on the 1st.
Robin, do you have a preference for what time? I know you said after 3:00.
No, after 3:00 is fine, so whatever, you guys, 3:30, 4:00.
3:30 is good.
3:30, 4:00.
Yeah, we could, yeah, because there's still people here in Town Hall, so...
We just have to make sure we call the fire chief and paralegal leadership.
Yeah, he's right back there. He'll put it in his notebook.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a request for a livery driver's permit for Brianna Shakif, is that how it's said?
Shakif.
Okay. Would you like to come forward, please, and lead the board? Okay, does anyone on the board have any questions? It has been approved by the police chief. Now, this is your first time doing this?
Yes.
Any questions from the board?
The actual owner of the livery service, I would presume on the license to the owner, we have all the vehicles and so forth. On the, this application, they're not listed, but I would presume we have that information.
Right, when it comes in, it's all checked off.
Yeah, so I just, just looking at the application that was on there, but I think we already have it and they confirm it.
Yes, we have several applications from those.
We have a lot of those.
Must have a file. Okay, then, is there a motion then to approve the driver's license and for the livery service? So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, good luck.
Good luck.
It's there, if you want to take it with you.
You're welcome.
Okay, have a good night now. Okay, next on the agenda, we have an application for a one-day liquor permit under the name of John Reddick. It's for the Hamilton Rod and Gun Club. It's for a outdoor fishing derby on the second and third ponds in the fish shack. Our request is for Saturday, April 20th, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Okay, does the board have any questions? We've done this before and they do have a license for inside. Anytime they have outside, they need a...
No objection by the police chief?
No, the police chief, Jeannay's got the one that the police chief signed off on. Yeah. It's not, they're only expecting, as print gets smaller and smaller...
Up to 75 people.
Us 75.
I'll make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license in the name of John Reddick for Hamilton Rod and Gun Club, and the date is April 20th, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, Jeannay, when that's typed up, we'll sign it. Okay. Okay, next, we have a request from the Old Sturbridge Academy to plant a tree in town for Better World Day. It's from Audrey Staples, and it says, "I am writing as president of the PTSA at the Old Sturbridge Academy charter public school. As members of the EL education, the academy and its students celebrate Better World Day, which is an annual celebration where students take civic action to make the world a safer, stronger, and more just peace locally and globally. Each school participating in Better World Day will design and execute a project involving community service and stewardship. This year, our school would like to celebrate what all of our communities have in common, which is our common spaces. We would like to honor the care, we would like to honor the care and keeping of our common spaces by planting an American sycamore tree somewhere in the town of Sturbridge. Better World Day is Friday, May 3rd, 2019. We are planning to plant a tree in each of our communities at 5:30 on May 3rd. We will be giving a small talk about stewardship, Better World Day, and the importance of responsible civil action. We will be inviting local reporters as well as town officials. We are now at the point in our planning where we need to get confirmation from each community that they will allow us to host our event and plant trees somewhere in town. Please feel free to respond with any questions or concerns you may have. I would be happy to explain more. Otherwise, if you have no questions at this point, all I need is confirmation for us to move forward, and we will reach out in another week or two to discuss an exact location for the planting. Thank you in advance for partnering with us and allowing our children to celebrate stewardship within their own community. Kindly regards, Audrey Staples." Does anyone have any questions?
I, well, I'm sure we'll approve it, but it should be stipulation that they contact the tree warden.
Yeah, I was...
Because as Tom says, the right tree in the right place.
It's true, yeah.
I, I was gonna, yeah, comment, that was my exact comment, because a sycamore tree has seeds that sometimes, if it's along a sidewalk or a public way, can be a nuisance, so, you know, but if it's in an area where the seeds aren't going to be a problem, it's no problem.
Okay, somebody want to make...
That would be up to the tree warden, it's not our...
Somebody want to make a motion to approve the planting? Contingent on what, with advice from the tree warden?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Okay, now, this, next on the agenda, it says, "A vote to concur with reappointment of Maj Cooney." We don't usually do reappointments. We do them all together, and a couple of years ago, we had made the decision to do them either the end of May or in June, so that everybody begins with the fiscal year. Also, this would have to be advertised as an opening to see if anyone else would be interested in it, because there are two appointed positions on this EBA, so we really need to hold off on this until then. I mean, Maj can still serve until then, but... So do you want me to call her, or do you want to call her? Jeannay, okay, just let her know. I mean, there's no problem with it, but it's, we have to give other people a chance, and we go through the whole list. Okay, next, we have a note from the DPW director. It says, "Attached, please find an email from Butch Jackson requesting approval from the board for two promotions within the department. If approved by the board, the pay rates for each position would be as follows. David LaMontagni, from equipment operator to heavy equipment operator, pay rate of $22.50 an hour. Andrew McDermott, from laborer slash driver to equipment operator, pay rate of $20.56. If approved, both promotions would be effective on 3/19/19. There are sufficient funds in the budget for these promotions." Any questions from the board? Somebody want to make a motion then to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the promotion of David LaMontagni from equipment operator to heavy equipment operator at a pay rate of $22.56 an hour, and Andrew McDermott from laborer-driver to equipment operator at a pay rate of 20.56 per hour, effective March 19th, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, next, we have a request to accept a donation. This is from the Economic Development Coordinator. It says, "The local organization, We're All in This Together, or Wait, has submitted to my office $100 donation for the Sturbridge Farmers Market. The funding for this has come from Baba Sushi here in Sturbridge. They donate 1% of their sales to charitable purposes, and they have asked that a portion from December go towards Sturbridge's Farmers Market. I encourage the board to accept this donation for the Sturbridge Farmers Market, which is overseen by the town's Special Events Committee, to help support the 2019 market season." Okay, any questions? Somebody want to make a motion to accept the donation?
I'll make a motion to accept the $100 donation from Wait, that's We're All in This Together, Inc., with special thanks to Baba Sushi for making this donation possible.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, then we do need a vote to approve and sign the annual town election warrant. For those not familiar with what's up for election, it is on April 8th, 2019, from 6:30 AM to 8:00 PM. And actually, Lynn, I believe, has a warrant article to change the general bylaws, because our general bylaws do state 7:00 AM.
I was just gonna, that's one thing I was gonna ask. An eighth doesn't look right. The word eighth...
E-I-G-H.
Yeah. It is okay?
Yeah.
I don't know why, it just...
It's all capitals, that's why.
That might be what it is. Yeah, that might be what it is. But I was gonna ask that because I see 6:30. Are we opening at 6:30?
By state law, you can.
Right.
But our general bylaws state seven, but she has held a few other elections at 6:30. Because I mentioned it to her and told her, you know, if she wants to do that, which is good, I mean, people get out and vote.
Yeah, because people can do it on their way to work, exactly.
But we need to change our general bylaws, which I know Ted said she did submit an article. So the offices up, there's Board of Selectmen, one for three years, Board of Assessors, one for three years, Sturbridge School Committee, two for three years, Tantasca School Committee, two for three years, Constable, one for three years, Board of Health, one for three years, Recreation Committee, two for three years, Zoning Board of Appeals, two for three years, Library Trustees, two for three years, Library Trustees, one for one year, and Town Clerk, one for three years. Okay, so do we have a motion?
I'm gonna go, E-I-G-H-T-H. It is spelt wrong. I'm looking at this again, and I just put it into...
E-I-G...
E-I-G-H-T-H. Eighth.
Yeah, there's two AEs there. Oh, it doesn't matter if it's too long.
No, no, but if we're gonna put this out for print, we need to look a little bit literate.
Well, this is...
The 8th of April.
Oh, yeah, you're gonna have to reprint these.
I mean, if this is going out to the public, I mean, this is disgrace, seriously. It's gotta be, it should be spelt right. Special Election Day.
A.
E-I-G-H-T-H.
Yeah.
I know, that's why I raised it before, and I just, I just Googled it, and I said, it isn't right. I know it isn't right.
You were right. It was driving me crazy, too, but I didn't say anything.
That's a shot put in some cases. Yeah, I mean, it gets posted.
Yeah, exactly.
I'd like to make...
We can still have a motion to...
I'd like to make a motion that we, we post the warrant for, for the election on April 8th, 2019, from 6:30 AM to 8:00 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, um, when you get them done, Jeannay, you can let us know, we can come in and sign. Okay, let's see. Department head updates, police chief. Chief Ford? Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening.
Start with January 9th, 2019. It was a pretty standard and traditional month. I didn't see anything out of the ordinary. There's nothing extraordinary to report. Our training and our operations remain consistent while we were running quite shorthanded through January still right now. Probably see some decline in some of the numbers, and those are reflective of the lack of personnel being out there. The self-initiated calls make that much of a difference.
Now, why the lack of personnel?
Turnover. We got a couple of personnel issues that are ongoing. We had one, one retiree, one we lost, two, the chief's position, Lieutenant Salio, and so we had, we had to fill those two positions, plus a third position that's currently vacant right now.
And you're moving along with the...
We are. It's just a slow process. In all the years of doing this, I've never, ever seen such a drought of qualified persons that are interested in becoming police officers. Traditionally, when we put out a job notice, probably 45 to 50 applicants, and of those numbers, probably 2/3 of them would qualify in some form or another, then you narrow it down to your 10 and conduct your interviews and grab a good candidate from there. However, these, I had a rerun, our announcement twice, to gather up 14, just 14 applications, and of those 14 applicants, only five of them met the minimum qualifications within academy. The rest of them just had part-time academy. So it's not anything that's unusual for Sturbridge, it's going on everywhere, and all the towns are very shorthanded and having a real hard time trying to find people that want to work in the profession right now.
Well...
So we do have some candidates. We've, we are in the process of conducting some interviews, so we're rolling forward on that. Other than that, there really isn't a lot more about January unless you have any questions.
Anyone have a question on January?
I just had one.
Mary?
So the business and house checks are down by like more than 200. Is that attributable to, to the staffing?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I'm just curious, are those checks that you do of your own initiative, or does the business or house say, please check on...
It's a combination of both.
Okay.
We have our house check program that we've had for a lifetime here. Where a resident can submit a form and have their house checked while they're away. And those are part of it, but just part of the daily patrols. And we have our town broken up into segments, and each segment is designated with a, with a letter, and when the officers are doing business checks, or residential area checks, you know, those particular areas are logged in. And if somebody gets out and goes, walks through all the stores up at the Walmart Plaza or up at the school pulling on all the doors, you know, those are separate business, business checks as well.
So when people go away for the winter to Florida, whatever, they can fill out the form and have their house checked?
Yes, yeah, it's a, all the stuff you can get online.
Yep.
Through, through our, through our website, and it's a program we've had that's been pretty successful for many, many years.
Mike?
Yeah, I had a question. During the recent power outage we had, one of the residents informed me that, that without requesting, the police came to their house and checked it, make sure that everything was okay, and they, they thought that was a really good, good thing. It was, you know, there was a power outage, so...
Fortunately, it was contained to a smaller area, and enabled us to go door-to-door to make sure everybody was okay, just because of the, the weather and the time of year. And we wanted to make sure that we at least put, put eyes and a voice on every person in the home to make sure during that time. It would have been, if it was townwide, it would have been a little more difficult, but fortunately, it was isolated. But thank you for recognizing that.
Yeah.
Nothing else on January? Okay.
And February's pretty much, pretty much the same. And you know what? February's not here anymore. It's March, and it's getting warmer, so we can get excited about that. Our dispatchers that we, all the dispatchers that we appointed, they're all rolling along with their training now, getting accustomed to our standards, policies, procedures, et cetera. It seems to be pretty successful. That communications portion of the building is always buzzing now. There's minimal of three, sometimes four people in there at a time, so there's a lot of, a lot of learning going on, and it's, and it's good to see all the positive things that are coming from the new hires. So we look forward to their successful field training programs and, and let loose on their own, so they can start working their, their own assigned shifts. Otherwise, I don't have anything else to add for February.
Anyone else have anything on February? Do you have anything else?
Nothing more than that I look forward to seeing you all on Saturday morning.
I just have one thing. I did get a copy of a letter, and it was actually addressed originally to you and to Chief Grasso from a person in town who needed the services of both departments, and it just says, "We write to commend the superb service your departments delivered to a household in a time of extreme concern," and we don't need the details out there, but it says, "The residents and businesses, business operators in Sturbridge have every good reason to feel deep pride in the community's public safety services, and visitors can surely develop confidence," so...
It was a very nice letter. We did get a copy of that, so, so thank you for recognizing that as well. Thanks.
I don't have to read it again later, do I, Chief? Okay.
We'll see you Saturday.
Thank you, see you Saturday.
Thanks.
Saturday.
Eight thirty.
Yes.
Coffee and doughnuts.
Eight thirty?
Yep. And I didn't pick the time.
No, I know, because you wouldn't have picked eight thirty.
Ten thirty. Okay, next, we have our building inspector, Nelson. Would you come forward, please?
Good evening to the board.
Good evening.
Okay. Monthly reports. We issued fifty-seven permits for this month. It's the time of the year. It has been a bit slower, but it's been a good thing. It gives us time to catch up on other things and things that we never have time to do we're catching up on, so it's good. I think the biggest thing is, this time of the year, see stove inspections, wood pellet, quite a few finished basements, insulation inspections. And we do have a couple of new houses, three forty-two, the trail, and one at overview. Specific commercial projects. I have a list that, that you, people have probably have seen, but I'm just gonna go through the any changes from the last time. Edwards Gas, if you go by there, you see the canopy, they're erecting it, and it's, it's coming along. They're about ready to pour the cement floor, but the canopy itself is up. Petrogas, they're starting to work on the, uh, site work there a bit more. There was a change in the, uh, construction management. GAFTEC, they call it, they're out of Maine, so they've, uh, resubmitted some paperwork and stuff. So we're hoping that starts something, goes along pretty quickly. That medical marijuana facility, I just wanted to point out that, uh, I did sign, sign a temporary C of C, and probably some people are wondering, well, why is it not open? What it is, they're having trouble with the product, I guess. Where they're growing it, they're having some trouble, and they're trying to work it out, so they actually don't have product yet, and as soon as they get it, then they'll open up. Panera Bread, uh, looks like they're gonna be opening up the beginning of April. They're getting real close. They've got a lot of the inside kitchen stuff, a lot of their finished stuff, flooring and walls, looks really nice. Pine Lake Resorts, they're working on the inside buildings. There is a little snag there with conservation, and they're working that out. I guess they extended beyond their, uh, site plan review, so they're redoing that. Green Acres, if you go by there and you look to the right and down the hill, they're doing those eleven, there's like eleven motel rooms, the doors, they all open right out to the old-fashioned cabins, motel rooms, went a whole length. They've actually got them completely stripped. They're doing them over there, plumbing them over. It's a really good thing, 'cause they're quite old, so it's really good for the town. The other interesting thing, they're gonna open an escape room at Teddy G's down below. A few people are familiar with escape rooms, there's some in Worcester. Should be, you know, exciting for people that come to town, I hope. The other thing that I really wanted to talk tonight about, too, was the demolition.
Oh, Nelson, before you, you get to that.
Sure.
Number four on your back, you have capital project, projects. And then number five, you have personnel issues. Hoping personnel does grade review. Personnel committee has recommended that we go to an outside firm to come in and do a review and write a report. So it's not going to be done until the next fiscal year. So just to.
Okay. Yeah.
Let you know that it's not gonna happen quickly.
Okay.
But it will happen.
Oh, yeah, it will happen. That way Personnel Committee won't be getting all the blame for.
And we don't get inundated all the time with the same.
Oh, I know. Same thing.
And we get a fair and impartial review of.
Right.
Of everything.
Very good.
Okay, go ahead, Nelson.
And then, uh, demolition, seven Maine. I, uh, sent a great deal of paperwork. The bottom line of all the paperwork I sent, I think it makes a lot of sense. What I'm looking for tonight is, is I wanna get the okay to, uh, to talk to KP Law and get a, have him do a brief, a legal brief, and then, uh, draft a complaint, and then, you know, take it to court and get an order for demolition for the properties. The reason being, uh, if you read the paper, uh, their counsel, KP Luntz, said basically that, uh, it was, it was, it was an important thing to do, because it serves as a legal notice, because, uh, at seven Maine, there was problems of, of who actually owns it. And if we do have it wrong, when I, when I sent out the final letter, by going through the court, they've had their chance to, to address it, and if they don't, it keeps us out of trouble. So I, I, I really would like to do that for seven Maine, but also, if I'm gonna do it for seven Maine, there's another property, five fifty-one Lead Mine Road, where I've been trying to get it done with the owner, but it's not happening. And I'd like to take and, uh, get an order, court order from, from, uh, for both properties, five fifty-one Lead Mine Road and seven Main Street, and I think that would help us out a lot. When a new town manager comes aboard, I'll catch him up to speed. 'Cause you guys did accept, accept the procedure, and I wanna go through that with him, where I'm at with him, that paperwork. I have for it, so I'm hoping, you know, that once we get the court order, we can, both of them could come down fairly quickly, I'm hoping, you know.
Yeah, um, I don't have the procedure that we did adopt. Does anyone else have it with them?
I don't have it with me.
Because, um, I personally would like to wait until Ted's back to, you know, look at our procedure, see if it matches up with what town council is advising.
If you read the paperwork that I sent today.
Yeah, I, we just got it. We just got it.
Yeah, 'cause she, she explains what you just said, that it matches up, 'cause I did ask that question. I actually sent it originally the first time out to, to Mr. Ekman, or Ehrlichman, and, uh, then she got it, and, uh.
Who's she? We keep saying she.
Pat, Pat.
Patricia D.
Oh, this is from the, from KP, okay.
KP.
Question, can I just, is this out of the seventy-five thousand dollars that the town allocated? Is that where this is coming from?
I'm not sure who's paying the legal fees. I'm not.
Well, who's paying to take it down?
That's, I think.
That's the other question.
Yeah, with our procedure, we did, you know, allocate money at the town meeting for it, so I would like to see, you know.
Whether the legal.
Match it up, whether the legal fees will be paid out of that or what. So I personally would prefer when Ted's here, and then our new TA starts the first, which is only two weeks away.
You waited this long, what's two weeks?
Yeah, so I don't really personally think two weeks is gonna make a big deal. I mean, don't get me wrong, I do agree that they both need to come down, but.
That's fine.
I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
No problem with that.
With waiting?
Yeah, waiting, I have no problem with waiting.
I think, uh, the building inspector has done research, uh, and, uh, you know, has pointed out that we, we probably do need to go to court and get a court order. You know, at this point, I don't think we would get in court within two weeks anyhow, probably, so. So, so whether, whether it's two weeks from now or not, uh, we, it's gonna take a little time even to get a, get a hearing on this, I would imagine. I don't think that they'll jump right on it.
Right, so two weeks is not that long.
I don't think that's unreasonable.
No.
But thank you for researching and.
Yeah, just so everything matches up, Nelson. We don't wanna.
Sure.
You know, do one thing and get caught in it. Okay, Mary?
I agree, but I just wanted to say, Nelson, nice work. Because I know this is very time-consuming, and it, you, your paperwork has to be just right in terms of due process, so, um, I do support it, but I don't have a problem waiting for our TA to get back.
I get it, I get it. I think it's probably a good idea, too.
Right.
Just mentioning, and I don't know which one, I know Heather Hart is here tonight, and she has pictures of the trail. I don't know if you'd like to see them, but, no. You know, it, it shows what condition that five fifty-one.
Oh, yeah, no, we, uh, we're, we're in.
You all know, it's okay.
She's got, she's.
Yeah. If she bothered to bring them in, we can look at them.
Absolutely.
Should I address, got this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Heather Hart, five twenty Lead Mine Road. I brought this to the Conservation Commission almost two years ago, and they made a determination that it should be taken down, which is fallen to Nelson to follow through with. But I took some pictures today of the trailer. It's been boarded up and has been vacant for over ten years. It looks, you know, you can see the roof is caved in. You can't tell from this, but the roof is caved in on it. And it's now, I'm trying to say, I'm not really good at distance, but I'd say it's about thirty feet from wetlands now. You can see where the ice is, is where the water is, and that's just taken right from here. And there's the back, I had never been to the back of it until today, and the back is even, is even worse. It's been torn apart, and I don't know what lives in it, and I can only imagine how many things are in there right now. It's, uh, as I said, I think the Conservation Commission made their determination that it should come down. It has a, obviously.
Heather, into the mic? Into the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry. It has, um, a septic system, and I'm not, I know that at this point, it's, it hasn't been used in so long, I'm not sure what the condition of that is, and where it, it's so close to the water is a real concern. But I think if Nelson has been out there, I don't know if it has an oil tank still. It did have one. I did not see one today, but there was an oil tank there, so, and it was, uh, you know, I don't know what the condition of that oil tank was, but the Conservation Commission, as I indicated, felt that it should come down.
Yeah.
So if you have any que, you're welcome to keep the pictures.
That's okay, they.
No, I think we, I mean, I can only speak for myself. I totally agree.
Okay.
Nelson, do you, do you have a, a copy of the original, um?
Before the oil leaks.
Conservation determination?
I don't have it with me, no.
No, but I mean, you have it.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And just so you know, I, I wrote.
Yeah.
A series of letters to the owner.
Oh, no, I know you have, yeah.
It's just, it's not happening, you know?
Yeah, no, no.
And that's why, you know.
Sometimes it takes a push.
Yeah, yeah, a shove, sometimes.
Yeah, no, real big one, yeah.
Nelson's been very helpful on this, but it really is, it's, when you don't get cooperation, it finally comes to you.
Right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I, I will say to the board, though, I thank you for the seventy-five thousand, and, and I realize we could watch what we spend, but at least it's, I think we're getting in the right direction, I really do, but it's gonna take a little bit more. Once we get through these first couple, I think, you know, it'll clear up to in a respect that once people know that you're willing to do something, you're gonna do it, and it's not all talk, 'cause like she said, that's been like ten years. Some of these houses have been.
Yeah, it's not empty words.
Yes, yes, I think the board's doing real good.
Well, you did a good job with the Edward, where Edwards Gas is, with the structure behind the house. That was.
Thank you.
A building violation.
You gotta just, you know, stay with it, but I thank the board for their support, too. I really appreciate it.
I, I just had a, a question on the, the, that Mrs. Hart brought up, the, on the septic system. If we're demolishing the structure, uh, you know, should we also abandon, uh, the, the septic system and comply with health regulations in doing so? And also the well? There's a procedure, if there's a well on site, you have to, that you have to ban.
The well should be decommissioned, and they put that, uh, flowable concrete in it.
Right.
As far as the septic, it's just a case of it, it, it being crushed.
Yeah, crushed.
You know, it doesn't even have to be taken out after.
Yeah. Crushed and, at site level.
Yeah, if we have somebody there with a, whatever type of equipment, probably it's a good time to do it.
Yeah.
As far as the decommission, that's a good point.
Well, she, she pointed that out, and I, I think, uh, as part of the demolition, we should determine if that's what.
Yep.
Included in the scope.
What, what I have is, I have done some drafts, not as much for that one as for seven Maine, and, uh, 'cause that one's quite complicated, 'cause seven Maine is not just taking it down and everything, it's because of the logistics. It's a state road, I have to get a, a permit from the state. Uh, I've talked to the chief, to the police chief. And, you know, it's a case of traffic and routing and police officers and fences, and you're gonna keep that main, you know, thirty-one main, it's gotta continue, you know, with flow of traffic, so there's quite a bit to it, but I, I mean, I'm this close, once, once I've, I'm sure that we, you know, we informed and we, a legal notice, that's the huge part of this right now.
Yeah, I have, um, a question. On the escape room, now, this is just through Conservation that I, I don't know if they've even said anything yet. There supposedly is a problem with the back asphalt, the backyard. Would this affect the person who's gonna do the work they're gonna do for the escape room? 'Cause what I hate to see is somebody do all this work and then have an issue. I don't know if it's, if it's to your attention yet.
I, I, I know it was brought up to planning, and planning didn't seem to have a problem with it, but in all fairness, I don't know if they knew about what you just said, so I'm not sure.
I don't think so, I, I wanna say that I don't think so at the time. This is relatively recent.
Say that one more time, so I can relay.
Yeah, I was told by someone on Conservation that the back end of Teddy G's was not supposed to be asphalted.
Okay.
And it has been, and there's a problem created, and Conservation was aware of it and working with it. I don't know what that outcome is, and I don't wanna see this person, whoever opens this business, be affected and not be aware of this, if there's anything there.
I, I, I will go to Conservation and Planning tomorrow.
Uh, planning, I don't think is, I don't think planning is aware, Nelson, because it's a conservation issue. It's a conservation issue. Yeah, telling them is one thing, but it's more, it's Conservation's issue with what's happened back there. I don't know if it's resolved, I haven't heard.
Yeah, Heather, I don't know, I think it was when you were out, but it actually was brought up to the planning board.
Oh, okay.
And the planning board said, "No, it's exactly as it had been approved."
Okay.
Okay. But, I mean, if you wanna double-check, it won't hurt.
Doesn't hurt.
Mary? This is a little bit of an aside, but the escape room, is that the activity where you try to get, um, out of the room? That's extremely popular. It's very exciting when it's coming to Sturbridge.
What, what they do is there, I, I believe there's like five rooms, different themes.
Yes.
Different little bits of furniture, and in the furniture, like, they, they hide it in all the furniture, maybe behind a picture, maybe underneath a desk. But once you get the, the hints, you're still gonna solve them. I mean, they'll ask history questions, whatever, so, so my advice is bring smart people with you, 'cause I, I want to one.
They're very popular.
That's what I did.
Our son did one in Providence, and they're, they're all over now, and it's a nice activity when.
Yeah, they're pretty fun. Yeah, they're pretty fun.
-resonance and when visitors come in.
If you like it.
I, I mean, I'm claustrophobic, so I, I, I don't know, probably not for me.
I'll sit outside with you, Mary.
Hey, Mary, are you afraid that I could let you out or what?
Yeah, probably. Yeah, that would be, I have a quick, another question.
Sure.
On the Edwards gas, I'm happy to see this update. I have, I've been having a lot of questions for the people who live in that area, so I just wanna read it out loud. The canopy is being erected, you're waiting on an architect's drawing for the convenience store, monopoleens to clean up area, plant shrubs inside back buildings in spring, for anybody who's listening, 'cause a lot of people that live in that neighborhood have been asking me.
He's promised he's gonna clean that up, and, and I still haven't received the paperwork for the, and I was gonna say that tonight too, so I'm glad you said that.
Okay, so when the canopy is being erected, does that mean by the spring, it should be an operating gas station?
Yeah, the steel, well-
Or is it summer? I'm just, just roughly-
Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping. I, I haven't asked the actual date, but I'm gonna say summer.
Spring is a couple of days away.
Yeah, no, I know, 'cause I did, I'm just curious, 'cause you're still waiting on the architect's drawing for the convenience store. Are they planning to open the gas station before they have a convenience store?
Yes, yes, before.
Okay.
Yes.
Excellent.
They haven't gone to planning for the convenience store, have they? Or is that all part of it?
No, they went to the planning board.
Is that all part of it? Is that, was that whole project all part of it?
All part of it.
'Cause someone asked me, and-
Oh, sure.
Somebody asked me the other day, and they, they were told that it had, they hadn't brought it completely to the board, but if it's good, this is good to know if it's all set.
They, they did bring it to the board, the planning board, and we knew about the convenience store, but they intended at the time to open the gas station first, and then work on the design of the convenience store, but the structure and everything that's there is suitable for them to change it up and to use it as a convenience store. They don't have to rebuild it, in other words.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Okay, anything else for Nelson?
I just wanted to briefly mention what I've talked, talked about, five leaves. I know the project's on hold now, but if we can get that project going, it would make the town eligible eventually to be a housing choice community, which would allow the town, you know, the opportunity for, you know, $250,000 in grants and that sort of thing. But even more so, it gives, because the governor is really pushing housing choice, it gives us extra points, a lot of extra points when we apply for a MassWorks grant, like, we'll have to, if we, if we wanna do something on Route 20, we would apply for a MassWorks grant. The town of Ashland just got $7 million to put utilities underground in a MassWorks-
What do they have to contribute to you now?
Uh-
In the campaign?
I don't, they, well, they have, it's, it's part of it, it's near the train station and all that, but it's, but it does, you know, I, I don't know what other contribution town made, but I mean, it, it can be a significant amount of money that we could receive from the state to do infrastructure improvements in, in town through a MassWorks grant. It can be a lot of money, so, you know, getting the, you know, this is, and having, the way housing choice works, to really do it, if we have, it goes over how many, your housing production over the last five years? Now, we, we had a real slow year in 2014, but if we could have a really good year now, we would at least be a 3% community, and we very likely could make 5% of our housing stock being produced in, over the last five years, which would put us, you know, up in upper echelon of getting grants and so forth, so if we, if we can get up to 5% housing production, that's really good. Though any, you know, there, there are towns in central Mass that have done it, but most of the communities are around Boston that are housing choice communities.
'Cause the thing is, the town is not holding up this project.
Yeah, I know, I know, but I, I'm just, and I'm, I'm not saying, I'm not saying-
Five percent affordable housing?
No, it's just 5% of the total housing stock.
Mike and I had looked at the Excel sheet today, and, and I was showing him other towns like, like Charlton, Southbridge, they were about the same range we were as far as new housing goes. The only one that had, came close to making it was Spencer, and I was surprised about that, so I'm wondering sometimes if numbers are-
I know, I would've thought Charlton, yeah.
Charlton, you'd think would, yeah.
Yeah, because they've been building houses forever.
So I didn't get that, because he let it into their numbers, something isn't right.
Yeah.
If, if it looks like, the, the, at our last meeting, I mentioned that I had gone to, to Boston for the governor's announcement of the housing choice program, and if, and I met the Secretary of Housing and Economic Development, and he offered to come to Sturbridge, and if we can get some assurance that, like, that project's gonna go forward, and it will make us eligible for housing choice initiative, I think we should ask him to come out here and explain the program and all that.
Absolutely.
So we, so we know, we all know a little bit more-
It's always nice to hear, but it's not up to us if that project goes forward. They apparently didn't take into account the cost of water and sewer.
Water and sewer.
Which is-
It was like-
It's a big faux pas, I mean, you know.
That's a major.
But, but, as you recall, Mr. Mazzelli was here last time, and he's working on, on trying to see-
I didn't mean to interrupt you, but that reminds me, I know I wasn't here, but I did get a letter from the chairman of the Housing Partnership, and he said that Mr. Mazzelli came in on his own, and he really was not speaking for the Housing Partnership people, because they hadn't designated him to come to the meeting and speak, he just did it on his own. And this person said that, you know, it's usually up to, if a board wants to go before another board, the committee has to approve, and it's usually the chairman.
I wasn't aware of that, so.
None of us were.
No, no, you wouldn't be. It was only, neither was the chairman of that board.
Yeah.
Till after it happened, so, yeah, so, well, if it moves along, but-
Mm-hmm, but it-
Big bucks.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot of money, and it could benefit the town in the long run.
Got an extra checkbook? I won't hold my breath.
I know, I know, I, I just don't know how you can plan something, and, I don't know.
I know.
I do forget things myself. Anything else for Nelson?
Not for me.
Thank you, Nelson.
You're very busy.
I think it's still bright out there.
Not quite.
Semi. Well, you know-
Semi, yeah.
Yeah, but when you go out, it's always bright and looking out the window.
Yeah, 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 it's true, it's true.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the Fire Chief, Chief Garso.
Evening, everyone.
Good evening, Chief.
Couple of points I heard on the news this morning, that by the end of this month, it'll be 7:30 and it'll still be light out.
Right, March.
So I did hear that.
March picks up the more minutes per day, 'cause it's also a 31-day month.
And I will say that I also received a copy of the letter you referenced earlier.
Yeah.
The three crew members that were on that were commended, and a copy of that put in their personnel files.
Yeah.
So I provided you with the monthly reports for January and February. Nothing significant. We do tend to see an increase in service as the warm weather months start to show up. I'm very pleased to report that the incidences of fires are down slightly from last year. I would like to remind the residents that the new alarm by law has gone into effect January 1st, so it's my recommendation that any resident or business owner who has an alarm system, either fire or security system, keep it in good working order, and if they have questions, to speak with an authorized service representative, so we can avoid as many of the, the false alarms as possible. Any questions on either of my reports?
Any questions from the board? I don't have a question, I have just a slight complaint.
Okay.
It's not really a complaint, but your pie graph on page 21 each report, I can see it here better under these lights, but at home, it's very hard to distinguish.
Do, do you have it in color?
No.
Okay, I'll make sure you get it in color, I think it's probably easier to see it.
Just that, I mean, the bar graph's easy, but this looks like, yeah, it's hard to tell.
I'll, I'll have a color copy sent over tomorrow for each of you.
Thank you, that's-
I have a couple of announcements. In the month of February, we had a graduation from the Fire Academy. Luke Quattricelli graduated February 27, 2019. He was appointed recently, I don't remember the exact date, but he's been a welcomed addition to our department, young man, very energetic and, and ready to go, very eager, so I'm happy to have him, and I wish him congratulations and the best of luck. And I know it's a little premature, but Matthew Bono graduated from the Full Time Academy on March 8th. He had been appointed about a year ago now as one of our Safer Grant members, and we needed to wait until he finished paramedic school in July to get him into a Fire Academy, so now he is a certified paramedic and a certified firefighter one and firefighter two, so again, I wish him congratulations and the best of luck. The last thing I wanted to mention is, this year, we started a program in the Fire Department called the Hydrant Helper Program. You may be aware of it, it's been out on social media, and I'm gonna pass out some photos of some recent events. This program was not my idea, I'll admit that right off, I did see this on social media from somewhere else in the country, but I thought it was a wonderful idea to get the community involved in, in helping us to clear the fire hydrants. Obviously, every second makes a difference for us, and having those hydrants cleared as quickly as possible is a huge, huge help for us to be able to put fire out and get water on the fire. We thought that, or I thought that, getting the community involved was a, a big thing, and to repay them, we would give an individual a ride to school in a fire truck. Who doesn't wanna go in a fire truck?
To school?
To school, sure. So what we, what we did, we were getting so many submissions, each snowstorm, we, we had a new, call it a lottery, and we were getting so, so many submissions that what we decided to do was, we had the, the pictures sent in via Facebook, and we entered each person who sent in a picture into a lottery and did a drawing on Facebook Live for the winner, each snowstorm. And that person was allowed to bring three people with them in the fire truck to school. Three, I think we did it three times, three significant storms. The, the most recent group of storms we did over the weekend, we, we put them all into one, but it seems to be very well received, and I, I truly appreciate all the help that the community has given to us, so I just wanted to make that mention publicly.
Hope they pick kids in their neighborhood.
Yeah.
All my friends live there.
And I, I can't say for sure we're not gonna have another snowstorm, but if we do, we'll do another Hydrant Helper program.
March, March could be tough.
Sure, sure, that's all I have.
Okay.
Thanks, Steve.
Anything?
Thank you.
Anything else from the board?
Thank you.
See you Saturday morning.
Have a good night.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have old business, Priscilla.
Just a question, the budget books, will they be ready before Saturday?
Barbara said tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
And it's 8:30 Saturday to about 1:00, pretty much?
Depends on-
Give or take. Depends how much they talk.
Yeah. Depends on the talking.
And it's here, yeah.
Yeah.
It's in here, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, Chase?
I have none.
Mike?
I attended the East-West Rail presentation by, by the Department of Transportation in Springfield last week, and on Saturday, I also attended a workshop, or they called it a charrette, which was a brainstorming session in Palmer. I do have some comment forms, if anybody wants to make comments on the East-West Rail proposal, they're, they can, I'll leave it in the Selectmen's Office, a copy of the comment form, in case some of the citizens from town wanna comment on what they think about it.
When is the deadline for that submission?
The, the deadline would be around April 1st, I don't know right now, but, you know, if we get all the comments submitted by, by the end of this month, we should, it should be fine. And, and you can also send an email, and on the form, it has an email address that you can mail to as well, but, I, you know, the, the East-West Rail study right now is only considering a stop, stop in Springfield and in Palmer and in Worcester, that would affect us. There, there's also part of it that, that is, includes the Berkshires, but I don't think that affects Sturbridge too much. One of the things that I'm thinking as we, one of the comments I'm making is, it would be nice to have a rail stop where the, the railroad intersects Route 49, so that would be convenient for Sturbridge residents, so, so that's one of the comments that, that I will be making, and if, if residents have any other comments, but I think it would be very convenient for us to have a parking garage and rail station at that location for, I've, I've used commuter rail quite a bit in my life, and I, recently, I've had a chance to ride on the Framingham-Worcester-Boston line, and I, I must say, the first time I did it a few years ago, it was very unreliable, and, but now, you, you don't wanna be a second late to the train station, because that train is leaving, like, to the second of when it's scheduled to leave. It's really amazing how they've improved the service, and it's very reliable and, and very convenient to use, and I, so I look forward to improving that, and it's, it's fairly economical to, to use. It's not, the, the rates are going up about 10% in July, or 1st of August, but it's still a, a nice way to get into Boston, especially at, you know, when there's a lot of traffic. You're riding parallel to the turnpike-
What do you mean, when? When isn't there?
Can I comment on that?
Priscilla, were you?
Yeah, absolutely.
Priscilla, were you on the board when Mary Reddick's coming on the board?
Yes, yes, I was.
And that came up at that time, we even wrote to the state and-
Yeah, nothing happened.
Well, she wanted, she wanted a train.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what he wants.
That's what he wants.
That's what he wants.
Train station. Yeah, but, no, her presentation wasn't for the commuter rail, I didn't think, I'm just-
Yeah, I think it wa, it was for the train to stop in here, to stop here.
Yeah, stop in, same place.
You're right, Mary, it was, it was Mary Reddick who had a whole thing on a train stop, yeah.
Yeah, they did do a, a study several years ago, about the time Mary was here, here, the state did a really, relatively extensive study, and-
And we had written letters, we had, whoever was here at the time, I forget who was, was it Sean, had to be Sean, because Mary was then, had written letters in support of all this, and here we are, how many years later, and we're still having the same discussion.
And they're still, still ignoring them.
I mean, it's still, this, this is like, this is just the beginning, I mean-
Oh, I know.
This is something that would be so far down the road.
Yeah.
And I like Mike's enthusiasm about all these things, but-
But it's not gonna happen, I know.
Not quite as realistic or-
Hasn't been here as long.
pessimistic as me, working with the state.
Hasn't been here as long.
Yeah, I mean, Tom is not even gonna get there.
Can I just follow?
Mary, yes.
I do think they're further along now than they were when Mary gave the presentation, but because it's the comment period, and Mike is already, is very conversant with all of this, and you are writing a comment yourself.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if the board would authorize, if we're on board, I certainly am, authorize Mike to write on behalf of the board of Selectmen, because it might have more impact than writing as an individual select person and resident.
Why don't I submit a draft?
I think the town administrator should write that letter.
Yeah.
I really do, it should be an official from the town, no offense to anyone, but it should be an official.
Based on the consensus of the board.
Yeah, it would be based on the consensus of the board and all.
But maybe, but it might, but I don't disagree, but maybe, Mike, you can draft something, 'cause you certainly are more up to date on any of this than-
Yeah, and I-
I think Ted is, or, and not that Ted won't, I'm not disagreeing that Ted would be the ultimate drafter, but I think if Mike puts together the background for him, I think that would be advantageous, 'cause he's been going to the meetings.
And I, I think at this time, I think the success of commuter rail on the southeastern Massachusetts lines that they've extended, and the, the Worcester-Framingham line is very successful, I mean, you can't go buy a parking lot there that isn't full.
It's the only way I go to Boston.
And, so I think with the success of those rail projects, I think we've got a lot better chance within the next five to 10 years of having rail service in, in this area.
I'll make a bet, but I won't be around.
We should do a time capsule. You know that one, there's a town that did a time capsule?
Yeah.
And, and put it for 25 years out and say, hey, we're still waiting for the lines underneath, the housing and the commuter rail, and see where we're at.
We'll see where we are, yeah.
No, but that, that's good, Mike, so get something together and, you know-
But I think-
Is there a motion then?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that we, I don't wanna say direct, I wanna make a motion that we authorize Mike to come up with a draft letter in support of a stop on Route 49, to be ultimately sent by our interim town manager, town administrator.
Second.
Sounds great.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I don't really want that.
49 and-
I think it would be convenient.
In another town.
Your kids might, might get benefit.
Maybe, are you, maybe.
Maybe, we have kids.
They have added a lot more lines leaving Worcester than they used to have.
Yeah, but not going west.
Not going west. Not going west. But that's trying, they're trying to accommodate people.
Yeah, when you have to, when you look at the, you know, even people who want certain businesses in town, you know, businesses look at the demographics and the number of people, and, you know, when you look at, you know, take, take just the regional high school area, look at the number of people there as opposed to, you know, four communities around Framingham, I mean, we're talking really imbalanced numbers, but, okay, did we vote?
I think we did.
We did, 5-0.
Okay.
Good. Okay, next on, oh, do you have old business, Mary? Okay, new business, Priscilla?
I just, it, it's not new business for us, but it's just like, in the last edition of the Beacon, it had a state offers grants to looking at culvert projects for small bridges and the like. I mean, the deadline was March, is March 20th, which is coming very quick. But there, um, I wondered if, it's too late for this year, but if next year we look at getting some of these grants to, I know in the town of Southbridge, they've gotten several grants, um, to fix their bridges, to fix, um, um, in fact, they're working on another one now. Um, and this is all granted, grant funded. And I would like to see something done for next year. Maybe this could go on, uh, I know the bridges and stuff are on the town administrator, the new town administrator's goal, but maybe slash looking into this to.
Right.
Make it more palatable.
Because that came up at the MMA meeting in January, too, and, but it's explained, it's for very small bridges, um.
Yeah, well, we have a few in town that are on the to-do list.
Oh, yeah, but those are considered bigger bridges than what they're talking.
Yeah, those are, the spans are more than 12 feet.
But they might get smaller in time.
I won't tell what you do, Priscilla. And you're off hours? Okay.
But we also do have culverts that need, need fixing and so.
Yeah, we can put that.
It's worth looking into.
Slash, yeah.
I mean, find money wherever you can get it, right?
That's right. Chase?
I have no new.
Mike?
Yeah, I would like, uh, at our next meeting or, um, some meeting thereafter to review our, our bullying policy. Um, I, no, I, I, I don't think, uh, you know, an elected official, uh, should threaten a town employee with being fired. And so I just wanna see how we, uh, uh, we, uh, we deal with that at our next meeting.
Okay, have you read the personnel?
Yeah, but I'd, I'd like to have a copy and, and have us discuss the situation because we, we had an incident and.
I was gonna ask what the process.
Yeah.
Bullying?
I had a resident complain about, uh, an incident last Friday.
Yeah, um, in cases like that, though, you should first tell the person to address it with the town administrator because the town administrator is the chief administrative officer of the town.
Yeah.
Um, and there's always two sides to a story, so, but.
But, yeah.
No, we can certainly put it in the agenda and look at it.
I wanna, I wanna a- address our policy.
Yeah.
And as far as the day-to-day operations, you're absolutely right that the town administrator has to take care of it. But I just wanna, you know, I wanna look at the policy and the discussion would be strictly limited to policy.
I, can I just have a question?
Mary?
I know we're, we're not disclosing any names. Was this a resident or, or a staff person that was an incident? Did it involve a resident or a staff person? Was a resident bullied or a staff person bullied?
Uh.
And allegedly bullied, I know.
Yeah, allegedly bullied. There, there were several staff.
A staff person?
Staff were allegedly bu- bullied. And I don't, I don't know all the details and I didn't really look into them because that's not my job.
It'd be a bomb.
It's the town administrator that would have to look into it. And it may not be the interim. It may be the, uh.
Full-time.
Full-time that looks into it.
Two weeks. Okay, but we will discuss.
But it's not, that's not my job. I don't wanna get.
No, we will discuss the policy.
Don't wanna get involved in it.
You know.
But I wanna review the policy.
Yeah, okay. But certainly tell that person to see even the interim.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mary?
Already, kinda already did.
I don't have any new business. Uh, correspondence, Mary?
Correspondence dated March 5 from Charter Communications Annual Complaint Outage Report, March 5 from the Mass DOT Chapter 90 Local Transportation Aid Funding, March 5 from Charter Communications Upcoming Changes, and March 5 from the Mass Department of Revenue Commonwealth Sewer Rate Relief Fund.
Okay, some of those numbers are, would be interesting to give. Well, I won't even do number one first.
That's a joke.
On the Chapter 90, um, well, it's not final yet because naturally the budget isn't final, but tentatively it looks like, um, $431,518. Um, and then on the, um, Sewer Relief Fund, it's $1,100. Now, as far as Charter Communication, if you look at the second page, well, page three, according to this, they've had a total of five complaints. One on billing, two on reception, and customer service, two. I mean, I find that hard to believe from people I talk to, people I read about. But we had this last year, too.
They were all resolved within four to seven days.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, yeah, I, I, I have a hard time believing that there's five.
Oh, I know.
I mean, on a given day, there are five.
There's five on Facebook that complained and say, anybody else in my neighborhood?
Exactly.
Yes.
So I don't know whether they, I, I, I kinda read this again and I'm getting the sense that they're trying to call it under an outage. So in other words, if there was a storm or whatever and there was an outage, they're not referring, as I read this, I think they're getting clever with not referring it to just complaints.
Yeah.
Does anybody know offhand what our fiscal year 2019 Chapter 90 was?
No.
Is this an increase? I mean, I, I think it was.
It would be, it would be almost exactly the same.
Oh.
Cause it's 200.
They haven't.
Oh, yeah, we did get a supplemental at the end.
Afterwards.
Yeah, but.
That's all right.
So, so I found those.
We got another 20% afterwards.
Found those numbers interesting.
Roughly.
Okay, anybody else have any other correspondence? Okay, approval of minutes, March 4th.
Um, yeah, on page three, um, the bottom of two, Janay, um, stated that she thinks it's important to have complete background checks. And it says employees to set a precedent. Um, that employees to set a precedent doesn't belong there. Cause it should just end with have important, to have complete background checks, period.
Yeah. That's good, cause I wasn't here, but I read that and I said.
Yeah, it didn't make sense when I read it either.
Yeah. Anyone else have any additions or corrections? Is there a motion then to approve as amended?
Motion to approve as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, and one abstention. Okay, next we have citizens forum.
Just want to make sure.
Okay, Jay. And, no, no, and you can come up, but use any.
Oh, okay.
Microphone. It's for the people at home. We can hear.
Okay, okay. No, I just wanted to make sure.
But people at home can't. Okay, thank you.
I just want to understand the process in town about the permitting, about construction permitting and how it goes. If you follow this email change from last page going forward, I have a sign company who applied for Panera Monument Sign. And he needed some paperwork, the workman compensation, so he gave it to them, uh, to the building department. And then all of a sudden, the email says, thanks, thanks so much. You are all set to proceed on March 13. And then on Friday, I got a email which was sent to my contractor, not me, from Cindy, the administrative assistant. And she wrote it. I just spoke to the planning department. And I need to go back. I, as a billing owner, would have courtesy to have notified to me what's missing.
Well, no, no, go ahead.
So, so what happened, an administrative assistant's making the decisions on a, on hold construction permit, which was already talked to them that was done and subjected to the planning department. When I went to the planning department on Friday, there was nobody there. Building inspector was not there. And I talked with the assistant and said, this is how we work. So, I, I was upset and I was a little angry. I'm, I'm not gonna tell you that I was not because when I have followed through on my planning board, my, you know, it was a long, hard fought process for permitting to be approved. And not even looking the files, not even looking anything. If somebody just says, well, I talked to the planning department. Who, when, how, nothing. So, I had a Jean Buban cellphone number, so I actually, she was out sick.
Sick, quite sick.
So I actually text her and he says, Jay, you should be fine. There is nothing wrong with it. Nothing wrong with your permit. I have that text, too. I, I can show that to you. But my point is, when you go and ask for somebody, then I came to main town hall, town administrator on vacation, there was nobody here. At 10:45 to 11 o'clock, I have nobody in an authority to explain to me what's going on with my permit. But this is, this is not the first time that happened. So this is why I want to come in. And then, I didn't, I didn't, on February 6th, same person, I get a letter, says that my, my Holiday Express pool is not in compliance. I have all the permits and says my permit, they need to close. But I'm not the one who wants to complain. I think there's a problem with the process. Administrative assistant sending a letter with no signature. There is no signature on that letter.
From, and who's that one from? What, to Palmer?
Cindy again.
Cindy?
Yeah. And then, so this is, this is a chronic problem. I want to make sure. It's just not me or maybe whole town having this issue or what is going on. So, and then Mr. Supernat's aware of this one. In July 37, 31st, 2017, I get a letter on a town letterhead by a viola who doesn't even work for the town. You know, they work for the town, but they're not, not authorized, I don't know, with no signature, nothing. So, I'm not sure why town's testiner is going out and saying, I just opened with the CEO, certificate of, this is, I'm not in compliance. Something, I personally think that I either not know what's going on in this town or this is what business people gets here. One or the other. And I want to know, is that what's your impression or your impression or your impression or anybody's impression? This is, you know, I've been, I've been going.
It should be, it, it should be smooth and everyone should be on the same page. Now, you originally had a permit approved by who for your sign?
Both. Planning Board and Design Review.
Design Review.
Right in this room, we have a joint meeting.
Yeah. Okay, so if you had those, then it's up to the building inspector to sign off. But apparently, he didn't, right?
Well, apparently, building inspector was not even aware of that my Cindy has sent any letter stating on hold. Basically, you read it on email, it's a whole construction.
Yeah. Well, she shouldn't be sending out letters like that without the oversight of the building inspector. So I think we're gonna have to tighten up things and pull it together because, you know, it, you're not the first one that things have slipped by. But if you have planning board approval and design review approval, all the building inspector has to do is sign off on it.
Oh, I agree. But, and that's what I thought.
Yeah.
And, and then, but if you read through the email.
Yeah.
Cindy just says that she spoke to the planning department. So Jean did talk with Rebecca, which is, she was also out. And she says, well, she thought the Panera has changed a lot. You cannot think, you know, you need to go to the file.
And look at it.
And what is, it's approved.
Yeah.
You know, I'm not gonna do something as a business owner who did the gateway districts, truly what is the gateway district. To me, this is very disheartening to try to do the right things and somebody just in the power sending the letter. And then they expect a business owner not to be upset.
No, I don't blame you, Jay. I really don't. But we will have to sit down with the, well, maybe not the interim, but the new TA and tighten these things up. Because they did go through the permitting process and streamlined it to make it easier. But if you've got people sending out letters.
With no signatures.
And their superior doesn't know.
Right.
That they're sending it out, then there's, uh.
And, and, and so you know, this is not happened first time. I have gone chronological. And, and let me tell you, before I opened my hotel, DPW, okay, and Leon, I met with them for seven weeks. And Mr. Kibinski was my side contractor, so he know. I did not get a water after same issues. Well, you did not say there was a pumping station. I'd notified Jean, planning department was aware of. If I knew I had to give it to the DPW director, I would have done gladly. But tell me what's missing so I can get on with my project, rather than having a, nope, you didn't submit something. How do I know as a business person what I'm missing?
No, you don't, you don't know what you need to submit unless somebody tells you.
Thank you. So, so.
And it's supposed to be smooth.
So I'm just, I'm so frustrated with this town right now because I think I did a tremendously fine job, what I had promised. And every time I need a little permit, it's always an issue.
Yeah.
It's always been. Right here is my paperwork.
Yeah. It shouldn't be and we will straighten it out. Mike, question?
Can I, can I, uh, ask, uh, whether, uh, your sign company submitted, uh, in February, uh, after the si- Design Review Committee had approved everything? Did they submit a sign, uh, with a different logo on it?
No.
Well, there was another submission in, in February.
Honestly.
By your sign company.
Let me put it this way. The logo issue was, has been resolved. I wish Heather Hart would have stayed here.
Yeah.
There was an issue during the permitting. So we.
Right.
Delayed two weeks because we want to have a consistent logo.
Exactly.
The logo on the drive-through was different and logo on the sign was the difference.
Right.
So that issue has been rectified, Mr. Supernat, you know, before. And all I'm saying is, they need to approve what was approved. They should not, the, the assistant should not be making the decision without asking the department head. Here is my real issue then. If department head is the ones making the decision, or the assistants making the decision. And if assistants making the decision, we don't need a department head. And if department doesn't know what the assistant's doing, then there's something really the process is fault. There's something real issue here.
Yeah.
And I don't believe that the assistant acted independently either. I don't believe that.
Well, we're not gonna.
Yeah, that's irrelevant.
I mean.
I don't understand.
Yeah.
As a receiving end, Mr. Supernat, this is all I got, what I give you. And that's came from an assistant. So if assistant doesn't, does, does not react individually, I think it's a process problem. I'm not faulting any person here. If you, if you see my statement, we have a process issue. The process, if the assistant was told one thing and process telling second thing, then we need to have the combinations. And we need to rectify smoothly for any business person, just not me. And then, I, I, and then honestly, Mr. Supernat, you cannot have from 2017, the permit's open, pool permit's already in my hands, so I can, I'm glad to give you that, too. I didn't make a copy because I only wanted to make a statement that there are issues here. I'm not, I'm, I'm not here to find a fault with the town. What I'm trying to do here is, we want to make sure the town is in single, one simple process where no matter Patel comes in, Supernat comes in, Kibinski comes in, anybody comes in, process is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. And you do one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, you get a permit.
Mm-hmm.
That's all I'm asking.
How long?
May, you should be no.
Can I ask you, how long did it take for the issue to be resolved? One hour?
No, it was not. If I would not have come in and if I would not been angry, Mr. Supernat, that issue would not have been resolved. Town's closed at 12 and it was 11 o'clock.
But you came in and, and questioned it, which you should've.
But nobody was there.
So I was told by the assistant, this is the process and you're not getting the permit. If that's was the first statement when I went to the center building. Then I said, I'm going to the main building, to town administrator. Town administrator was not here. And I was angry. I'm not gonna tell you, if, I, I, I made the statement. I was frustrated. Uh, I, I didn't want to go back on the file because I want to open my Panera and I need the same signature. And then I, I was approved. No, nobody was willing to go into the file and check the drawings.
Yeah, Priscilla. Yeah, um, this situation that Mr. Patel has gone through, uh, is not new, unfortunately, with an assistant. Um, there's a couple of businesses that I went to maybe a couple of months ago. And one of the owners came up to me and said, is it standard protocol in, in Sturbridge? He doesn't live here. And he said, is it standard protocol in Sturbridge that a secretary comes in and tells me what I'm in violation of after hours? And I said, no, but what are we talking about here? And he said, a particular secretary came in and said, you're in violation of A, B, C, and D. And he said, wouldn't the department head tell me? Wouldn't the inspector tell me? And I, and, you know, whether it's fire inspector or building inspector, but wouldn't somebody else tell me? He said, is this normal? He said, I don't know. If it's normal in Sturbridge, I'm okay with it. But somebody needs to tell me it's normal. And there was two businesses. It isn't normal. And I told him it isn't normal.
No. So we, we, we are definitely going to have to, when we have our new town administrator on board, we are definitely gonna have to sit down with.
And to be honest with you, to Supernat question.
Yeah, no, but sit down with departments and everything because, you know, just this simple case.
That's right.
You had planning board and design review approval for your sign.
That's right.
Right.
Simple next step.
Put it up.
And that is my question to Mr. Supernat. I should not have to come to the town hall.
No.
To plead my case.
No.
Right.
Because you already had approvals.
Right.
So.
That is my real issue. The, the real issue is if somebody went through the long, hard, hard permitting process, permitting is in their hand, which was supplied with the drawings and everything. It should be simple thing, okay?
Take it out.
As long as you do this, you are approved.
Yeah.
And you can construct. Cannot have a e- email saying on hold.
Yeah. No, I'm sorry it happened, Jay, but I'm also glad you brought it to our attention because.
That's all. I want to make sure anybody comes to in this town who wants to do business with this town has to understand, hey, you follow the process. We are easy town to work with.
Yeah, yeah.
It's the process is in question. It's not the person. And I, I, I want to underline that.
Yeah.
Ms. Buban, as sick as she was, she responded to me and she, she actually says in that it's, it's probably the building department. And I told her, I said, that's not. And I forwarded that email. And she came just today, half a day, as sick as she was, to making sure my permit was correct.
Yeah.
So, so I, I, I want to make sure it's not the personnel, it's the process.
Well, I think it could be a combination of both.
Oh, yeah, in some ways.
It could be. But, but the way I look at it from a business owner point of view.
Well, it's, it's the process that obviously, in this case and probably others, is a little broken. And people are the reason processes are broken. Um, so we will work on straightening it out.
And to be honest with you, Mary, I had a lot of respect for every one of you here. When somebody send a town letterhead and no signature, how, how, how well we look. a town letterhead and no signature, how, how well we look in front of, if I did this, too.
Which one is that?
That was, let me tell you. This is one from the Shane Moody.
Moody.
Okay, that's one, okay? Then I have one.
That's, is that when, is that the one about the pumping station? The sewage pumping station?
That's the one about the cross connection, which, which was never a cross connection, you know. They never even came and asked my plumber. And once I get the CEO, July the 7th and July 31st, that letter comes in, I'm violation. Then I have another letter on 6th, February 2019, no signature.
And, but, so you, what department is it from?
That's the department, the building department.
Oh, yeah.
So, so, I, I just want to make sure.
We've gotten a few things, and I've noticed signatures missing in.
That nobody has to go through what I'm going through. That's, that's my simple request. I personally think that me and my family has done a great job.
Oh, it's beautiful.
Creating Gateway District. Please, if something missing, call me, send me an email. Hey, Jay, can you just bring this? Because I think we need this to, to make sure you're permitted, rather than send it my contractor. And then, I look like a, you know, I don't want to use the word, you know, to be honest with you, in a very distant environment, that I don't know what I'm doing when I have done that kind of a building. And that's all I want to, you know. I want to make sure. Talk to me if there was missing paper.
Yeah. No, I, I don't disagree with you, and it will be taken care of. I'm sorry you had to go through it.
No, I, that's why I actually came to making sure, so everybody understands that this is a simple process and permitting should not be an issue, you know? Should not be having an issue. And then, to be honest with you, I, I do get, I was angry. I'm not going to tell you, because I should not have been here.
No.
I was doing something else. I had to drop that because my, I don't want my sign company to put me on the back burner again. Because in this, this economy, if building department say you don't have the permit, they're not going to work on my permit.
They're not going to wait either.
They won't wait for you. They'll.
Exactly. So that's all I wanted, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you at Panera.
Thank you, yes.
Although maybe not the first day.
I'll be there the first day.
There'll be too many other people.
Honestly, I will invite almost everybody, you know. I think it's going to open sometimes April 5th, 6th, 7th, depending on how good weather is and how well Mr. Kibinski helped me.
Put me on the spot, Jay.
So we'll blame him. Okay, thanks, Jay. Okay, no other citizens. Mary?
I just want to say, I do think it's important that things are signed.
Oh, yeah, I do.
Because otherwise, you don't know if it's official.
I mean, I could pull something off Ted's desk and send it out.
I mean, not everything. I mean, not everything, if it's a memo to somebody, but if it's directing.
Yeah, no.
A business person to do or not do something, it should be signed.
I think, and I think that if anybody has, is waiting for permits and has permits, if an assistant is going to act on behalf of the department head, then the department head should be CC'd, so the receiver knows that the department head is aware of this. Because an assistant just running off.
We'd have to look.
In this instance, the, the, the department head was CC'd on it.
Yeah. But I also think we have to review the job.
It's right here.
I can read. I understand that. But it doesn't always happen, Mr. Super Nut, and you know it, too.
But I think we have to read the job descriptions.
Yes.
Because I don't believe in any of the administrative assistants, there's the job of.
Assistant, assistant position, yes, yes.
Taking the, you know.
Taking the title.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, they can give out, you know, stickers for yacht sales and things like that, but as far as correspondence with businesses and stuff, it's not really in their jurisdiction.
Nor is it in their jurisdiction to tell any business after hours that they violate whatever.
I know.
I mean, that's done during the day, during business hours, and by the appropriate visual.
I don't even do that, even though I go in places.
Well, I, I, I mean, we go to businesses and they have sign violations. I don't say anything to them. Not my job.
No.
You know, not my place.
Yep.
You know?
Yep. So, nothing else?
Motion to adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, 804.